Okay, so what to record? Okay, so what is the theme of this?
There's a negative side of Ainsa.
R T. Atota to shudhu negative side of Ainsa bolay chutu start kurese. So what is the main theme of the passage? What is the theme?
Ainsa mane bolche je victim ke wrong doer terthe bache the habe, kinthu without harming him either by body or by mind.
Yes, withdraw the intended victim from the wrong doer and the other, the second, tar pora je sentence gno ache that actually elaborate that point. That is an example. Most proper for the passive resistors of South Africa to have resisted the evil of the government. They bore no ill will to it, they helped the government wherever they needed. Their resistance consisted of disobedience of the orders of the government even to the extent of suffering death at their hand. Now what should follow this sentence? In the context of the passing. Eliminate options first.
B eliminated.
So B eliminated. B eliminated. Ainsa necessary to bring freedom to the people of this country. Eliminated. Right? Why eliminated?
So it's not stated anywhere in the passage.
Passage is not talking about freedom at all. So B eliminated. Which one you said C?
Sir, Karun, only way to get rid of negative mind wearing instead of not put out ball.
Okay. Now the choices between A and D. What do you think should be the answer?
So the E.
Huh? E mana R?
Sir, A.
Look at the options closely. Ainsa requires deliberate self-suffering, not a deliberate enduring of the supposed wrong doer. This actually summarizes what has been told in the example. Okay? This summarizes the what has been told in the example. Option D is not connected. Because the passage is not saying anywhere that Ainsa should not be practiced. Here, very, very easy. Next one, this is summary. Barbar bolche, try to understand the key, key context of the key theme of the passage. Which is that one or two sentence which captures the key theme and then you have to eliminate options using that. So what is the key theme of the passage?
A modern warfare.
What modern warfare? You have to tell me the theme. Unless you understand the theme, you will not be able to eliminate options. What are the things that the passage is talking about? Tell me.
That enemies will never meet and a rich nation can easily.
No, no, no. Read the passage from the start. The first thing that the passage is saying is war gratifies the combative instinct. That is number one. Next?
War will become a contest between treasuries or watchests.
Autonic pora achi. Best machine in that wings, this is the next thing. Not the most enduring man, so this is the second thing. Then war will become a contest between treasuries. So these are the three strong messages in the passage. So you have to understand this very clearly. The rest of it is all examples. From the second sentence onwards, it is doubtful whether fighting with modern appliances will continue to gratify the savage instinct of combat. For it is not likely that in future two opposing lines of men will ever meet or any line of column reach an enemy's entrenchments. The machine gun can only be compared to the Skype which cuts off every blade blah blah blah. It has made cavalry charges impossible, blah blah blah. On land, the only mode of approach blah 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 naval actions blah blah blah. These are all examples and elaborations of the first statement. Then what he says here that best machine will win is the next important point and not the most enduring man. War will become a contest between treasuries. These other, this is the main theme. Now eliminate options. What are the three things that has to be captured? What are the three things that have to be captured? Hello? War. Best machine. And money. Now eliminate options. Which is the first option that you should eliminate?
Sir, option B.
Option B, option B is just. I mean, it doesn't capture the essence of the passage at all. Next? Next, which option you should eliminate?
Sir, option E should do wealth bolay chue.
No, option A cannot be eliminated. Ami bolche one option? D, why?
So modern warfare machines and the change of the. Seh kani shudhu ekta, mane machine guns ne shudhu bolay chue, toh ekane toh onon kichu ne bolay chue.
That is not the reason why it should be eliminated. Why should it be eliminated?
Less combative in nature.
Less combative in nature, ek kotha ta kotha bolaa chue. Modern warfare is less combative in nature, ek kotha ta kotha bolaa chue. So option B and D are out, option A and C, now tell me which one should be the answer?
Sir, option C.
Option?
C.
C, why not A?
Sir, option C, besi correctly, passage jere idea tech.
Uh, modern warfare is unlikely to gratify the savage instinct of men anymore as the very nature of combat has changed with technology, this is correct. Option A is also correct. In modern warfare, wealth and not the number of soldiers is more important for winning wars. Now how many of you will go for A, how many of you will go for C?
Sir, option C.
Option C, anyone for option A?
Last one.
Okay. Correct. Once again, summary. Now what is it talking about? Very simple one. What is it talking about? What is the main theme?
The violation of the flag code.
Flag code and violation of flag code, so let's go. First eliminate options.
Sir, option C eliminate kura chue.
Why?
Sir, Karun, MHA er issue kora auditor kotha mention kora nee. Yera baaki option gno ta kora aache.
Okay. But the meaning is the same. States and union territories are to comply with the flag code which knowingly or unknowingly many citizens violate according to the Ministry of Home Affairs. Now look at the sentences once again. And now tell, and now eliminate. Which is the first one to be eliminated?
Sir, option A.
No, no, no. Option. See, tinte to sentence ache, tinte sentence, and what are the things told? Flag code of India is mentioned. Uh, violation of the flag code is mentioned by many citizens and advisory to states for compliance on national events. So option A has the word flag code. It has, uh, the word violated by many and to be strictly followed on important national events as per the new rule issued by MHA. That come from, contains all the three things. Why should it be eliminated?
Ek laste likhaana chue je asper the new rule issued by MHA. MHA ki rule issue kore chue?
Read it. What is an advisory, what is the meaning of advisory? What is the meaning of an advisory? Advisory means a rule. So option A cannot be eliminated, which option can be eliminated, these are four very close options. So you have to learn how to eliminate options in this case. Which is the option that can be eliminated? First option that can be eliminated.
C?
Huh?
C.
Kavanta?
C.
C for cat.
Uh.
Why?
It is.
Kavanta?
The file. Sata shirambas ta mention kora nee about citizens.
Mention to kora aache, which knowingly or unknowingly many citizens violate according to the Ministry of Home Affairs. So which one should we eliminate first? I'm not, not asking for the answer, I'm asking for the elimination. Option B is to be eliminated first because it is talking at all times and the Ministry of MHA is talking about important national events. Okay?
Yes, sir.
So the advisory is for important national events, not for all times. Read, read this. Strict compliance of the flag code on important national events, not all times. So option B is out. Which other, next which, which one to eliminate? For the same reason, option C is eliminated. Important national events is mentioned only in A and D. Now choose between A and D, see, these things should be very clear. That you have to look for the main thing, main points in, in the options. So B and C are out, now A and D. Now tell me which one should be the answer? Which one should be the answer and why? Fast, fast, Koinur. Which one will you choose?
Sir, option E besi elaborately.
Why? Beg answer dilaa hobe na, this is a very small paragraph, you have to be very, very precise. Why you take option A?
Mane flag code ki seeta bolche ebunka ebunka seeta violate kora jabe na, seeta bolche je rometa advisory te beroe.
Ekada option D to bolche. Option ete ki emon bolche je ta option D to bolche na?
Flag code ki seeta option ete bolche, kinthu.
R. That is one, R.
Asper new rule issued by MHA, oita. Seeta.
Eliminate kore di shikhi prasam.
Haan, kinthu ami new rule ta advisory.
Rule, rule means advisory.
Seeta jantam ne, ami vechna mane alaga. Oi design ta jonat thike jo jeta bhar.
No, 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 no. Option A elaborates on the, on the flag code, that is one point. Second point is the word strictly is to be strictly followed. And option B says ensure compliance with the flag code. The word strictly is missing. Now you look at what is told here. There's a difference between compliance and strict compliance. But they have given option D, which in my opinion this is wrong. For both the counties, this is wrong. Let me see what they have given. I don't think the person who has read the paper understands English. Advisory doesn't means, uh. Instruction, no. Advisory means a rule. Or guideline. Having or consisting the power to make recommendations but not to take action enforcing them. So now you read this. Option B. Okay, so this is a rule issued by MHA. Rule means, advisory means rule, it is, a rule doesn't mean that, uh, that they have instructed. Right? Rule is a rule, advisory means a rule, it is a guideline. Okay, so, uh, option C says. According to the, uh, option C in fact doesn't mention, it just mentioned according to the Ministry of Home Affairs. But option A very clearly says it's a rule by MHA. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next one. It also sentence completion. Okay, what is the main theme of the passage? What is the main theme of the passage? Sandeep?
Sir, the fallacy in the face survival of the fittest and what fit actually means.
Correct. That is the, uh, the essence of the passage. Okay, and read the last two sentences. The doctrine of evolution uses the term fitness in a hard and stern sense. Nothing more is meant by it than a measure of adaptation to the surrounding conditions. Into this conception of fitness there enters no element of beauty, no element of morality, no element of progress towards an ideal. Now keeping this in mind, read the options and eliminate.
Sir, B can be eliminated, mathematical certainty kotha bolene.
Okay. What else, what is the, B is not the first one that I'll eliminate, there's, there's one more before that I'll eliminate.
A.
Huh? A, why?
Sir, impediment to fitness, rakho, into put out ballene.
Okay, impediment to fitness is not mentioned, correct. Okay, then the choice is between C and D. Now read C and D carefully.
Sir, amar manha D habe.
Why?
Sir, Karun, morality would only play a role. Uh, if it were a necessary adaptation, ei kotha ta kotha bolane.
First is, it is very clearly mentioned, no element of morality. So morality would only play a role is absurd. Very, very clearly told, no element of morality. So morality play a role is out, that's the first one that I'll eliminate. So now, A, B and D, morality is more of an impediment to fitness than an attribute to it. This is not clearly told, that is out. B, fitness is a cold fact, ascertainable with most mathematical certainty. Now cold fact is very clearly mentioned, hard and stern. Okay? Now we'll come to mathematical certainty. The doctrine of evolution uses the term fitness in a hard and stern sense, which is a cold fact. Okay? Uh, now the option is B and D. This confusion about what fitness. This confusion about what fitness means has led us to think that struggle is necessary for progress. So that means option D seems more correct. Why?
Sir, last sentence, conception of fitness.
Yes. So there is a mention of confusion in the passage. So that is the confusion of what fitness is, is, is all about. Has led us to think that struggle is necessary for progress. So. Uh. So that means no element of progress. Into this concept of fitness, there enters no element of progress towards an ideal. Okay. So. So now you have to be careful. This confusion about what fitness means has led us to think that struggle is necessary for progress. So no element of progress. So go for option B. Clear? Clear?
Yes, sir.
So you see, the, the, the main thing is eliminating the choices. You have to eliminate the. Unless you come down to the, to the, to the crucial two, you, you will make a mistake. Uh, I mean the chances of making mistake is more. So the way you have to eliminate choice is the way I am showing you. Whatever is not told in the passage has to be out. So here also, morality is an impediment to fitness is not told in the passage out. Uh, morality will play a role out because no element of morality. And finally, the reason I eliminated D is because it is necessary for progress. No element of progress. Right? Now look at the explanation. Right? Hard and stern sense. That is what is, is the main thing in, in option B. Okay. So now. Whenever you are doing a passage or a summary, you have to focus on understanding the key thoughts. And keeping that in mind, you have to eliminate choice. Don't jump into answers. That is the mistake that, that most of us make. Don't jump into the, right, into the answer. Strutina is the answer with respect to each and every fact that is given in the passage. Keep on eliminating choice based on that and then zero in on the last two. The moment you can zero in on the last two, the chance of getting the right answer is much more. Clear? Understood?
Yes, sir.
So you have to follow this, this method. Eliminate the choice. Eight hundred question, in VRC, the, the success criteria is how well you can eliminate the choice. Joto, joto ghost question, you can eliminate choices, the chances of getting those questions correct is more. Don't jump into answers. That is as simple as that. Okay? Okay, for tomorrow we are going to do DILR. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, take care. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Bye, sir.